United States of America, and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bill Clark call the roll?
Councilmember Callings and Mayor Clure are absent. Councilmember Redmond, Councilmember Sterns, Mayor Protem Sakla.
Here. All right, so let's move forward into Agenda Item Number Three, Special Presentations, and I do not think we have any. Very good, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Four, Public Comments. So this would be time to speak about items not on the regular agenda, or, and/or, items within the consent agenda, so be aware of that. We'll start with the in-house audience. Anyone like to speak on items not on the agenda? Come on up, Brandy.
Um, so, um, I have three events I have to be there.
Okay. So name an address.
Brandy Caparasso, and I'm with Great Northern Services. I thought we were going to have a public hearing on two other CDBG projects that we were doing, but I only see that the technical assistance is on there. So I will be having to have another public hearing on those two, which probably will not be during a council meeting, because it can be not during a council meeting, but we did have two other CDBG projects besides technical assistance, and that was for micro enterprise business and then a business assistance loan program. Both expended about 80, 85% of those funds. We helped 10 micro enterprise businesses, which are to fund Mount Shasta City businesses with 10, five or fewer employees with the owner who is low income. And, and then we also did one business loan for $105,000, and they have to create, for every $35,000 loan, they have to create one full-time equivalent job. So, three jobs for the city of Mount Shasta.
Staff report on this, but it talks about the micro enterprise, and the title of this is misleading, of the staff report, but it's all in here.
Okay.
So, you know, let's jump up during that item.
Okay, yeah, it's just, for, it was noticed in the paper as a public hearing, but it's not on the agenda as a public hearing, for the other two grants, because there are actually three separate grants.
Okay.
So I'm afraid that that's going to be a technicality, according to the state. So I'll go ahead and, I'll talk about those, but I just wanted to make you guys aware that there were two other grants, so it's, I think it's going to be a state technicality if they don't see that it was actually held tonight, so.
Okay.
But I think Nancy's supposed to be here for the technical assistance, and if she's not, I'll kind of run through what they, what they kind of did. Thanks.
Thank you, Brandy. Anyone else in-house like to speak? All right, no one is coming to the podium? How about online? Okay. So we'll close public comments at this point, move on to council and staff comments. We'll start with the city manager.
Okay, you know, for the last year and a half, we've talked about the potential for creating an enhanced infrastructure finance district, which is California's version of tax increment finance, and we talked about if the city went it alone, for us, let me back up, tax increment finance is forming a district of areas that are undeveloped with the state public financing authority, and the year a district is formed, which can include a number of properties that don't need to be contiguous, we then freeze the tax increment that would normally come to the city at a certain level, that base-year level, and any new tax increment that accrues over the life of the district, which can be anywhere from 30 to 50 years, instead of coming to the city, it's plowed back into the districts for projects that will make it more likely that we will increase new development, and in the long run, increase tax revenues for the city, and incent new development. So if we were to go it alone, what we need to do is backstop, and backstop is a little bit of a misnomer. We're very safe if we use our general fund. The city would have to wait about eight years to generate enough tax increment to put an infrastructure at sites like the Landing in order to attract development, because we haven't been able to get that site off the ground, because developers don't want to pay for that infrastructure upfront, because the, the value of that property will take a long time to accrue in comparison to larger cities. Anyway, so we had a long shot proposal, hey, let's see if we can partner with Siskiyou County, and so we've, I've made a couple of pitches to them. The last was with our consultant Cosmont, who is the leader in forming, with forming enhanced infrastructure finance districts in the state of California. The two of us spoke last Wednesday, and after an hour and a half, we were able to get the Board of Supervisors in a vote of four to one, to agree, agree to partner with us and go down the path of, you know, forming a joint enhanced infrastructure finance district that can help some of these properties that have sat vacant for 20 years or more off the ground. So I met with Cosmont after the fact, and we're working on a non-binding resolution of intention. It's, it's, again, non-binding, that we, the draft will come before council in about two weeks, and after that, we then take the same resolution to the Board of Supervisors. If they vote yes on that, you know, which really is a list of the projects, the properties that you want to include in the public financing infrastructure document, it then goes to, you know, the formation of an infrastructure financing plan, and then the state for approval. And if we get to that point, and we can agree on what properties should be included, then the process begins where, you know, there's, there's a lot of planning work that needs to be done, but we're on our, on the track, if we deal in good faith, and again, it's not over till it's over, of having a joint district, which once formed, will allow us to have enough increment to put in infrastructure in some of these sites within, you know, a three-year timeframe. And right after this all happened, and I had the conversation with Cosmont, if you recall, there was a gentleman named Bob Kendrick, who was interested in buying the entire Landing property. He wanted to do some blue collar, you know, light manufacturing in modular homes, and also building a mix of market rate and workforce housing. He still wants the property. We're talking tomorrow, and I floated the idea that once the district is formed, that if he's willing to put the infrastructure in upfront, that we'd sign an agreement to pay him back as we get increment in, and he seems receptive to it, and he seems excited about it. So if we can all time this right, I think we're going to start, you know, we'll have the, you know, we'll have the usual opposition in town to new development, and that's something we need to work through, but I think we're, you know, on our way to, to starting to see some of these properties that haven't moved for years, on their way to seeing some development. So that's good news. And the only other thing I've got, switching gears, is an update on receivership. As you all know, the Nest property was awarded to a bidder. They didn't, it didn't go to the highest bidder. It went to the most capable group to kick the tires. They've done that, and so we filed with the courts a, what's the terminology here? You know, basically, an intent to sell the property. It's a formality, it's on August 31st, and then it's awarded to the, to the winning developers to then start the process. When we were working on the Nest, there was actually a high bidder that is actually the owner of the old hospital. It was sold, the Nest, the next high bidder that was competent, sold for $225,000, the other bidder bid 350. And so that brings us to the old hospital and getting that cleaned up. That's going before Siskiyou County Court now, I think it's for the fourth or fifth time, and in bidding on the Nest, what this party did is revealed that they have $350,000 in assets, which allows us to, you know, when we filed paperwork, and can potentially find them in contempt of court and force them to demo the property on its own. And so we're meeting on Thursday with the team and our, the group of attorneys that are on this, to figure out what our game plan is, if, if the judge doesn't want to go that route, to ensure that we can pay the Bay Area receivership group, because the property has quote-unquote "negative equity," the 25,000, 35,000 that they need to make themselves whole. And so, you know, we want to have three or four different, you know, the A through D plans, based on where the judge goes when we go before, you know, the judge in late August. But I'm confident that with the circumstances surrounding the property and no movement on the owner's part, other than paint, that the judge has seen enough.
And if I understand correctly, the hearing on the old hospital property is coming up September 14th?
I don't have the date in front of me. My understanding is it's in August, and so I thought it was actually next week.
Yeah, I've, I've got it down for September 14th at 10:30.
Do you? Okay, I may be wrong, I'll check.
So I'd just like to congratulate Todd, and Cosmont's not here, or their rep is not here, but the idea of setting up an EIFD, Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District, or CRIA, has been in the air since about 2016 or 17. Tim and I, Tim was more favored, he favored the CRIA, I was talking about EIFD. It floundered for, for years, and Todd picked it up and ran with it, and now we're at a point where it looks like things will move forward, and that's very encouraging, and it's, what, what we have here is what used to be called redevelopment in California. It's much more structured and restrictive than that form of tax increment financing. Back in, back in the day, San Jose rebuilt itself on redevelopment, tax increment financing, light rail lines, hockey arenas, and so forth. Really can't do that type of thing, maybe, maybe not, but it's, it's mostly about infrastructure. You can do parks, you can set up parks and so forth, but to get something like the Landing and possibly other parcels moving forward, it's, it's a way of subsidizing the development that hopefully will spur the development. Without it, nothing might happen at all in those areas, so.
So a couple things, I mean, and I don't want to belabor this, but, you know, tax increment finance is a tool that's been around for a very long time. The state reformed it and called it, you know, it's TIF Lite, Enhanced Infrastructure Finance District, so schools are exempt from reaping their increment, and, but it still has a lot of the same characteristics. The, the district doesn't need to be all parcels that are connected together, they can all, you know, they don't have to be contiguous, but we can use this money for, you know, fire hardening, for fire protection, for infrastructure and public works projects, for actual physical development of, you know, you know, public-private partnerships. Now, I think going before the Board of Supervisors, they were very skeptical. I think what sold them is Joe Dieguez from Cosmont being extremely knowledgeable on it, and that organization forming all the EIFDs in the state, and being no-nonsense and being very direct, and, you know, and talking about the pitfalls, and, you know, let the supervisors, you know, decide whether or not this is, you know, we're very transparent, and the way he delivered was really strong. I think the other part, too, is, you know, given that we've gotten some wins on development in Mount Shasta, the fact that, you know, I've got some, quite a bit of experience in, in managing urban annuaries and tax increment finance, and that we have a really good planner coming on board, and we've got the expertise to see this through, as Supervisor Ogrin said, you know, we can turn this down and wonder what if, and, but if we give this a shot and it works, we won't be kicking ourselves. And bottom line is, there is no risk for the county. If there is no development on these properties, we just close the district and walk away. So we're, I think we're in a pretty good position, and, you know, we just continue to be honest and work through the properties. I think the one, and I don't want to filibuster here, but there's going to be one interesting point of contention. Now, we have an RFP that we have approval for to get somebody to do the annexation of the One Chast property, and we haven't been able to find somebody, or the folks that did, our housing element are considering whether or not they have the bandwidth right now, and they're going to let me know in a week or so. There was some comment made at the Board of Supervisors meeting that, hey, who says we even want to annex? So we had One Chast property as part of the EIFD proposal. So if that annexation doesn't go through, one of the things that the county's going to want to focus on is, well, if we go it alone, and we put in infrastructure, they've got to pay for that increment, and any infrastructure that they put in, they're responsible for the maintenance, and do they want it? So there, you know, it may be that, that level of extra work and cost may, you know, make them, I mean, they've got to do their value judgments on it to decide whether or not it's worth it to annex it into the city, just to avoid the bother and the cost. Anyway.
Well, all in all, job well done, and it's potentially very exciting development for the city, so thank you again. John, Tim, comments? Chief, Tim?
We have on tonight's agenda to surplus the old Jeep, and periodically, the city does surplus excess property or surplus property. Could you tell the public what that process is once we declare the property surplus?
Right, so in this case, we're looking at a half-block of Field Street related to the Danko Affordable Housing Project.
No, no, it's about the Jeep.
First, I'm talking about the Jeep.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, gosh, I'm getting way ahead of myself.
So Tim is looking for a definitional description of what this surplus property process is? What are we doing with that?
So we deem property surplus, it's usually at a place that it's not workable, so if we surplus it, we have the ability to sell it to anybody that wants it, that wants to, you know, rip it apart and use it for parts, or whatever they want to do. If they want to build a statue in their yard, they can do that. This, just by going through the process of actually surplusing, you know, these no longer useful, you know, pieces of equipment or other items, it allows us to, you know, basically have a junk sale.
So how does the public find out about how they go about making a offer to buy it, for example?
So it's been my experience that, for example, when we do a patrol car that's getting a surplus, when we surplus a patrol vehicle, we'll take out all the, the equipment, the lights, radios, and any of that kind of stuff, and then it's sent to an auction, and people can go to an auction and purchase it.
Is it local?
That I don't know, I, I just know that once we've taken it, we bring it to city council, they approve it for surplusing, and then it's put into an auction place.
Okay, so it's not really the sort of thing where locals can make offers on it?
Actually, I don't think there's a thing where you can just go, come into the city and say, hey, yes, I'd like to buy that from you, it's going to go to an auction, but those are typically advertised in, well, what used to be papers that we don't have anymore. And then, but I know, I've seen two of our old patrol cars driving around town, so locals do buy them.
So, Chief, I didn't call on you, you have any comments for this meeting? Okay, all right, so we're going to move forward to committee updates, if any. For Todd, do you want to mention anything besides what's in the consent agenda?
No comments on consent?
Well, there was a DIAC meeting and beautification.
Oh, I'm sorry, the committee meeting. So the DIAC met, you know, we are, the Flower of Life statue is being installed, there's an encroachment permit for it, and then we will pay the folks that put the pedestal in place and mount the statue. We have approval for the Power Box Art, and we have some other projects that we're working on approvals for, just kind of kicking around ideas on, but they're making great progress. It's a group that's working really well together, and it's a dynamic bunch, and we're really rolling.
Todd, where is the, where is the final resting place for the Flower of Life? Where?
It is, I don't know the exact spot, but it's in where the farmer's market is.
Okay. You know, it's gotten kicked around in various places.
Yeah, it's, 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 on the Chestnut side? Okay, great. Let's move on to the consent agenda. City Manager recommends approval of the following consent agenda items. All resolutions and ordinances on this agenda or added heretofore shall be introduced or adopted as applicable by title only, and the full reading thereof is hereby waived. A, approval of minutes, July 24th, 2023, regular city council meeting and July 27th, 2023, special city council meeting. B, approval of disbursements, accounts payable, July 13th, July 19th, July 25th, July 26th, August 3rd, and August 9th, 2023. Total gross payroll and taxes for periods ending July 9th and July 23rd, 2023. C, approval of surplus items, Jeep Cherokee, which happens to be CCR-2321, it's a city council resolution. D, police department monthly report for July 2023. And lastly, E, committee minutes, downtown enhancement advisory committee, July 26th, 2023, and regular meeting, beautification committee, July 10th, 2023, special meeting.
I would propose that we adopt Item 7, B, C, D, and E, including the resolution just cited, and that we defer voting on 7A to a, another meeting, because we do not have a quorum that can vote on that tonight.
That's because you were absent.
I was absent.
So staff, understand that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. 3-0 vote on the consent agenda with the continuance of 7A to the next meeting. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Eight, public hearing regarding vacation of Field Street. The presenter on this will be City Manager.
Okay, I've already started going down this road, my apologies. We have 25 units of affordable housing that's bounded by Chestnut, Ivy, Field Street, and Alder Alley, and as part of this project, we needed half of the right-of-way of Field Street between Chestnut and Alder Alley. The entire width of that right-of-way there is 80 feet. Now, I brought this before council on August 8th, 2022, just to get the temperature of, you know, council on the idea of surplusing this property in support of the site plan and approval of this 25-unit project, and, and, you know, what I expected, we had unanimous approval to bring this back, once the project has been approved, so we aren't accused of piecemealing the project under SEQA. And so that's what we're doing tonight, we have full approval, it's been through SEQA. This is just the last remaining little piece to say this project is done in, in the books, and they can start, you know, their development. And so we've done all of our due diligence in terms of noticing this vacation. It's with the surplusing of 40 feet of the right-of-way out there, it still allows us access to the utilities, it allows, there's still an additional 40 feet of right-of-way, which is more than enough to get emergency vehicles up and through there of any size, including a fire truck, according to the American Association of State and Highway Transportation Officials, ASHTO. So we've met all our, our due diligence through our public works folks, through transportation, and are noticing, and this is just the last piece of getting this project off the ground.
Thank you, Todd. Fellow council members, any clarifying questions? John? Me, neither, so we'll go to public comments. Start with the in-house group. Would anyone like to comment on the Field Street vacation? Okay, this is a public hearing, but that was only ordinances, but okay, this is a public hearing, it's open at this time. Would anyone in the House like to come up and speak? Okay, going once, twice, three, that's it, we'll close the public comment on this agenda item. Public hearing on this agenda item. All right, well, I hate to say this is somewhat of an academic agenda item, but it's a necessary one, and is anyone of my fellow council members needing to say, motion's fine?
So I should, for the resolution, city, city council of the city of Mount Shasta vacating a portion of Field Street, resolution CCR-23-22, out of order?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? 3-0 in favor? All right, moving on to Agenda Item Number Nine, also a public hearing. Public hearing followed by no action, correct, staff? We're not going to be voting on anything on this item, right?
It's an opportunity.
It's a hearing.
We're, you know, for Brandy to talk about.
Right, it's, it's a requirement of the grant.
Yeah, right.
Okay. So the presenter on this is to be Muriel Terrell.
She is, you know, pretty non-modal still.
So we're going to, we're going to defer to, to Brandy Caparasso on this item.
Yeah.
To be the presenter.
As the expert, yeah.
So once again, Brandy, with Great Northern Services. So the grant was originally applied for through the Community Development Block Grant, and it was micro enterprise, technical assistance through JDI, and then business assistance loans. HCD, a community, the Housing, Housing Community Development Department for the state of California, they had a big audit from HUD, Department of Human Housing and Urban Development, and they got their hands slapped, and so they'd had a big reorg, and they split those three objectives into three different grants. And so that's why we kind of have this little snafu with the public hearing, there's actually three grants and not just the one grant which we thought was going to happen. So of course I'll just lead in and then I'll have Nancy give the technical assistance because they have the technical assistance portion of the grant. Great Northern did the administration of it. So we did the reporting, but Nancy, they, JDI did the heavy lifting on this one. COVID happened several months afterwards, so it really affected how we ran the micro enterprise and the business assistance and therefore it's, they're generally really popular programs, but COVID kind of took a hit as it did in everything. And so I can speak about those, but since the public hearing's about JDI, I'll let JDI talk about it what they did.
Except that I understand that she told you that they were able to distribute 85% of the funds in grants and loans to businesses. My name is Nancy Swift. I'm the founding director with JDI, the Jefferson Economic Development Institute, based here in Mount Shasta and serving the northern state now. This is the headquarters. We have an office in Redding as well. So I'm happy to talk about the technical assistance side of this grant. And also in the hearing, it talks about future needs, so I just wanted to put a little edge to that. I'm sorry I didn't hear Brandy's earlier comment, but I think what I will say will be in concert with that. As an organization, this is the 22nd CDBG grant that we've been a part of in this county. And it's the seventh CDBG grant that we're a part of under, as a subrecipient to the city of Mount Shasta. We love these funds and we think these funds are very important to the city of Mount Shasta in your efforts to build an inclusive, supportive environment for all kinds of businesses, regardless of the resources that people have and regardless of the background and education that they have and regardless of the type of business. So we have a lot of business support agencies in city of Mount Shasta. And, but not everybody's going to have a successful restaurant bar on Main Street. You know, there's a lot of other kinds of activities that people are conducting to support themselves, to support their families, to contribute innovation even, and certainly services to our community. Some of them we see, some of them we don't see as, as consumers, as citizens in the, in the town. So our technical assistance side of the project was to provide individual business consulting and workshops and any kind of a class. So we had one exciting opportunity that happened during the timeframe of this grant to provide a class that then people qualified for grants for at the end to run their businesses. That grant source was a little different than CDBG, but the timing overlapped. So we administer, we run our services and this grant in co-op, in conjunction with the rest of our services. So you're lever, with these grants, you're leveraging other federal dollars. You've also, these grants are the, the CDBG grant to the city, leveraged the existence of the Small Business Development Center and the Women's Business Center in your town and across this county. So they're really important as a leveraging source. They target, they are specifically to provide business development services to people of qualifying income, 80% of the area median income or lower, inside very strictly the city of Mount Shasta. So we, I think, I think we had 25 people, businesses that participated in, in this timeframe of this grant. So that's about $6,000 per business served. And out of that, we had three businesses start up. The rest of them are, are operating. And there were, how many jobs created? There were some jobs created. And whenever under CDBG you create a job, first, the person receiving the services is of low income. And if they create a job, it's also for a person of low income. So you can see that these are targeted funds for business development and an important piece of a bigger pie. Yeah, so nine pre-venture, three started business, seven were in the first 12 months of business, and that's the best time to call us to get help. Nine were already operating a business and 26 jobs were created and retained. Four people at or below the area median income. So in addition to the 10 loans that this same business program and grants provided, there were also an additional five clients who got some grants and some other equity in the 15 months of this grant. So even though all we have to track is how many people we've served who are income qualifying because it's under the public service side of this grant, it really is a business development tool. So I, when we think about this, it's a really important tool so that everyone has an opportunity. Some people are starry-eyed about their dreams about businesses. Other people are reluctant entrepreneurs. It's their only choice. Everyone has a goal and it only benefits the city when we're supporting them. So if we're thinking about what do we need in the future, one thing we did learn through the pandemic and through trying to market high interest, medium interest, heavy paperwork loans to people in a time of crisis. One, it's the wrong product for the wrong moment. So that was part of the delay in getting funds to people. But we learned during that process because we changed, we changed it up. And we knew people still needed access to capital and they were getting some relief grants from different sources. And you preserved and helped 10 businesses pivot during that time. It was mission critical. And that's, I think, something that we learned during the, is maybe we can structure the micro enterprise loan grant, forgiving loan program in particular, a little bit differently. And we'd like to be a partner in that with the city and with Great Northern moving in the future. It's really, when I looked at what, when we've worked with most of the 10 businesses that got your capital and some of them we've worked with for many years. Some of them, this is their second business. Some of them, I don't know, so it's, they're brand new. And I think that that's exactly what we want to see. And these funds are really targeted. And between Great Northern and JDI, we have been able to find those people and to really help shape the services as best we can in a, in a manner that was helpful to the businesses. I don't know if you have any questions about our portion of the grant. Again, we're a subrecipient, so we just provide the business consulting. It's been a long time since I have been to this meeting, so I would like to take a second to say happy 25 years for JDI. We celebrated 25 years last year and I have some promotional materials to share with you just to show you that we have a long history of serving diverse business owners and making sure that people are transforming their own lives and building businesses that help themselves and our communities thrive. And we'd like to continue to do that. And we have a lot of, we love to help shape really effective programs. So we've been really pleased to be a partner under this program. If you don't mind, can I give you this promotional material as I leave?
Please. And something that Muriel said about this in a little bit of time, I was able to touch base with her on is, A, the bottom line is it's, this has been a success and, you know, thinks it's very worthwhile to keep it going in the future.
Question. Nancy, recognizing that not all startups succeed, whether it's in Mount Shasta or in Silicon Valley, perhaps you can tell us about some of the businesses that you've helped support that have succeeded? Tell us the success stories.
So, okay. I'd be happy to, and we have someone who would like to tell you her own story. So here she is.
So Nancy Chandro, I want to say that JDI helped me start my business and I celebrated 22 years in June. And if it weren't for JDI, I wouldn't still be operating 22 years later. So thank you, JDI.
Yeah.
Do you need more?
Yes, so part of the micro enterprise portion of the grant, they, the businesses actually have to complete, they have to work with JDI because we're, we're generally, these are smaller businesses. They may not have the business knowledge to really run an efficient business. And they may not know what a P and L is, or a balance sheet, or a cash flow statement, which is part of what they have to submit for a micro enterprise business application. So we had 10 businesses assisted through the micro enterprise applicant, you know, through the, through that grant program. One was a local therapist, a sole proprietor film production company. She's doing, she has shown at the Mount Shasta Theaters. We've had a business that offers spiritual tours. Three businesses offering spiritual guidance and or personal growth assistance. One window washing business, a screen printing business. They had a location downtown. They had to move it back into their home, but I think they received a lot of assistance from JDI and how to do that transition. And then unfortunately, another store that had a storefront downtown and because of personal life experiences, they had to shut that business. But they gained a lot of knowledge and will be taking over another business soon. So I find that a success, even though that particular business wasn't. But from owning that business and running that business, they can apply that knowledge to running another successful business that's already established here. So those micro enterprise businesses really are the sort of the backbone of here, so.
And did Shasta Gravity work with you guys?
Yeah. And then the business loan, while they don't income qualify technically for JDI, they can be assisted by them. And so they were also helped by them. And so the different capacities from startups to organizations, you know, the big organizations, Shasta Gravity received the business assistance loan. So they're very established and don't income qualify for the micro enterprise. But we're hoping they succeed.
Yeah, thanks for the question, Tim. And we obviously serve a plethora along a progression of business stage size idea. The window washer is a particular favorite of mine. That's a local guy, started a local business, created three jobs, is still at it, had to pivot, didn't lose hope, is still operating. And that's, that's supporting him. And that's the spirit of this particular set of funding. So you can see the differences as Brandy was talking about the grant, the business, I'm sorry, the loan recipients. Any other questions?
All right, so we'll keep the public hearing open for audience comments. Anyone? How about Zoom land? All right, well, we'll close the public hearing on this. Thanks for your support for the community and the business sector of our community, our city. Micro loans and so forth are really helpful to get a lot of budding entrepreneurs and entrepreneurs that are starting new ventures going. And without those, without those funds and opportunities, things would not happen. So thank you very much. All right, so move on to a somewhat more, more controversial topic. Agenda item number 10, first reading of ordinance number to be determined, amending chapter 10.44, restricted parking, and eliminating two-hour park and specific locations. I was just wondering if fellow council members think that this might be something that should be continued to the 28th as a full council, IP more, you do? All right. Tim, thoughts?
That would be fine.
Okay, so I'm just going to move to continue this item to August 24th, when we hopefully have all five council, 28th, when we have all five council members present. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on, even not necessarily controversial, but certainly very serious. Agenda item number 11, discussion and possible action. Consideration of an ordinance establishing a minimum floor price law, MFPL parenthetically, to help decrease tobacco use. Now, again, this is a potential ordinance to regulate tobacco use in the city. It's a pretty serious step in many regards, despite where you fall on the political line regarding regulations. And again, I think this is one that's so serious that we really should have all five city council members here. Your thoughts, fellow council members, or should we just go with this?
We'll continue.
All those in favor of continuing to the 28th?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Moving on to agenda, sorry, folks, if you were expecting to speak, but I think the subject matter in both cases is weighty enough that should, it deserves full council hearing. All right, thanks for coming. I'm assuming most of you are here for that.
Concerning the fact that we do have people here.
Yeah.
If they want to speak now?
I don't know. What do you think, staff? Should they, should we just let them talk? 28th? Yeah. Anyhow, thanks for coming, sorry. But I think it'll be a better venue, a better time on the 28th. All right. So there are supposedly no reports outside meetings. I actually have one regarding the Collier Interpretive and Information Center. Had a meeting third Tuesday of July. Got some clarification on the relationship between the county and the visitor center, which is a governmental agency supported by the county. And the county contracts that agency to run the center and pays them monthly to do that. So that was clarified for me. I wasn't quite sure about what that relationship entailed. Also, there's some clarification regarding the hiring of a website designer. Turns out that he's going to trade his services for advertising on the website that he develops so there'll be no direct cash cost for the agency, for the Collier Center, regarding the development and improvement of their website. So that was clarified for me. Turns out that they're collecting $15,000 for, in fees, placement fees, advertising fees for businesses, agencies that have advertising at the center. So it takes their balance, their, the checking account balance from 12,000-plus dollars up to 27-plus thousand dollars, which is, you know, which is good. I was, I was just worried that this agency was going to be running out of money very quickly. When you get down to the $12,000 range, no matter how small you are, you start getting a little nervous. And so that, that was good news. And then the meeting also covered the purchase of items that they give away to guests and visitors and the development of maps. When that was being discussed, it reminded me of the map discussion we were having regarding active transportation. It wasn't nearly as controversial or as intense. Let me just say that. Everybody was rather pleasant about that map development. Most, had to do with maps of the area regarding volcanic legacy, driving routes and bike routes. So those things are going to be updated and posted so people can see them. And they'll have some, probably have some printed depending on the cost for people to take. So that is my report about the Collier Interpretive and Information Center. It is alive and well. Go visit it and enjoy the surrounds. Oh, lastly, they are, they are working on trying to get a trail built out along the river there. So anyhow. Talk about that in the next meeting next month, assuming I can make the meeting. Moving on to our final agenda item. Moving on to our final agenda item, future agenda items. A, Cal Fire Volunteer Fire Assistance Grant Acceptance, that's gonna be on the 28th. Emergency B is Emergency Shelter Ordinance, that'll be in September. C, Discussion on Possible Action, McLeod Avenue Parking Prohibition. How's that going, gentlemen? Is that actually gonna happen before the end of the year? Any thoughts?
Well, we're still haggling over, not haggling, we're still doing research. Originally, when that section was platted, the, the right-of-way was found to be 60 feet. So, and recent development that, no, no, no. After the fact, it was actually reduced to 50, we're trying to figure out exactly what the true difference is, so we know what we actually have to work with. And we've got some surveyors on it doing the research behind this. Ken's heading this up, I'm hoping.
Thoughts on this, Tim?
Actually, a somewhat tangential thought, and that has to do with Washington Avenue, which has been discussed over a period of time in terms of what to do with Washington Avenue. There's been questions of where the, how wide the road is, what the easement rights are, and private rights. So if there's going to be some surveying, it might be efficient to consider those two projects at once, if that were possible.
Just survey Washington and find out what their actual original right-of-way was, and then look at McLeod and Washington to actually see what we're working with and what we can do.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah.
So does that need to be a future agenda item, where we approve expenditures for?
Let's throw it on the pile.
All right, so there you go. Survey, the funding, approval of the funding and of the surveying of Washington Street. Street. Yeah. All right, D, Discussion on Possible Action Regarding the Active Transportation Committee. I have no comment on that. Hopefully, we do something there. And then E, Future Agenda Item Over 90 Days, Review of Chapter 13.95, Extraction and Exportation of Groundwater from the City of Mount Shasta. John, Tim, would you like to add any agenda items for the future? Nothing right now? Okay, me either. So at 6:23 on Monday, the 14th of August, this agenda, this city council meeting is adjourned.